Okay, I have six o'clock. We call this meeting to order. If I can get roll call, please.
Hi, Terry Moir.
Here.
Scott Patchen.
Here.
Sam Willis-Rhyno.
Here.
Sarah Morrow.
Here.
Tyler Munson is absent. Mitch Hockston?
It looks like he's logged Tyler's online.
Oh.
Yeah, he is.
Oh, Tyler, hi. On Zoom.
Yeah, he missed his airport travel or something to the Plaza.
Your comments, I guess, recording.
It is recording.
Looks like Nicole trapped.
I'm actually typing out there.
Okay, um, once Tyler can connect, we can hear from him. Um, Mitch Hockston, Dylan.
Here.
Hey, Fudge of Legion. Scott, Terry.
Fudge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and...
Through the posting and copying the notice was delivered to the following unmade fix, email to the Star News and Lake Ridge Bank and Black Earth Post at the Black Earth Municipal Building, Black Earth Post Office, and Black Earth Web Page. Public comment. Please, only to three minutes, we have some public. Hello.
Troy, I'm Sir, uh, four eight zero four, it's April seventeenth, Black Earth, purchasing the property thirteen eleven Madison Street. Wondering if there's, is my public comment time? Is there any discussion during Agenda nine at all?
Yeah, it's in discussion and action on...
On nine.
On nine. But if you wanted something to state something right now, that's...
Is there any opportunity at that time, or this is the only chance?
There'll be opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, then. Uh, discussion, action, approval of the meeting minutes from April ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, minutes from April ninth.
Yes, I do.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? March eighteen are included in.
Uh, they were in the package.
Oh, they were in the package. And then I'd also need approval of the March eighteenth minutes that were in your package.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, no, that's for...
Okay. All right, uh, discussion, action, Board of Committee assignments. I emailed this out, and then also I just put a copy at your meeting spot. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the committee assignments as they have been proposed? The only other addition, pardon?
I got kicked off, Park.
You want to go back on?
I don't mind. I've been doing some background work, but it's all right. I can hand those materials to whoever.
Come and present them.
Yeah, I'll just come present them.
Well, I can trade with you, because I've got Parks.
You want to trade?
I'll take the Gateway or BOD review.
You can have the BOD review.
I'll take BOD, you take where, uh, from Parks.
Gotcha.
Wait a minute now. You're going to do Board of Appeals?
Is that BOD?
Board, yeah, Board of Appeals.
No, we...
Oh, yeah.
BOD review, yeah. I can do that.
That's an alternative.
No, that's a different. Patchen has Board of Appeals.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. I'll take, yeah, appeals, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was looking at Munson.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Appeals.
So you're going to take Board of Appeals.
And he'll take Parks.
And he will take Parks. Great.
That works out.
I should be on Parks right now, anyway.
All right. Any other changes, suggestions? The only other thing, too, is I'd like to consider, and we can do this either, do we need a motion to approve, please?
I'll move we approve committees as the change you just presented and as you presented.
Yep. I have a motion to approve, second?
Yes, I'll second.
Can seconded. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The other option, or the other, um, item under this is that I'm going to, um, exercise my right, and I will move approval for the library board appointment to Kathy Wittenweiler. And Kathy is going to fill the seat that's vacated by Dylan, who now sits on our board.
So moved.
And she's been vetted. Okay, so Mitch moved?
Second.
Dylan seconded. Any, like a minute option. Um, any comments? First. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Opposed, may? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And also, under police, we are going to, I moved to, well, we're considering Jackie Falk as Police Committee Citizens', uh, appointee. I'll make a motion to that. Anybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have two new citizens committees. Please. Thank you very much. Moving on. Number seven, temporary alcohol license, picnic license application in Seaway River for American Legion Post three thirteen and Home Talent Baseball. I believe both applications are in your package. Completed.
I'll make a motion to approve both as presented.
I'd second that.
We have a motion to approve both as presented, and a second. Any questions or concerns?
Do you want to waive the fee?
They asked for a waiver fee, yeah. Yes.
Yes.
For both organizations.
Yes.
Would you like to amend your motion to include the waiver or the fee?
Yeah, to include the waiver or the fee. All right.
Good.
Ten dollars.
Yeah, that's fine. So we have a motion to approve waiving the fees, and a second. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion, action, number eight. Discussion and action, street use application closer of Webb Street between Mills and Center Street for June twenty ninth, two thousand and four. And I believe it's going to be for the purpose of holding a fundraiser and a bag tournament.
For who?
Yeah. For what?
The petition for street use permit that I have is blank.
That was the backside. This is what was presented to me.
Hold my page over to the left.
So it's, which is the name?
Amy.
Yeah.
Really isn't.
I believe it's the...
Oh, it's that, uh, Saving Legends.
Yes.
Yeah.
Between where? The lanes and where? Bulldog?
It's Webb Street by the lanes, right?
Oh, Bulldog.
Well, right, that whole thing is...
Okay. So it's going to be from Mills to Center, so that's straight, right?
Yeah, what's it for, or who's?
It's for Saving Legends, that fundraiser of Amy Parent, Ray, her son, giving it to us. Um, there is a house right there. Was that house notified?
Lots of business, no.
Oh, would the one be behind it? It might have, it might have a Center Street address.
Behind the Bull, anyway, maybe.
Right.
Well, that, yeah, okay.
Because that's where the garage, the garage is.
It's not Center, it's probably on, uh, Weber Street, the shack, runs by the shack is their address, I think.
No, it's probably Center Street, because their garage comes out of Center Street.
Yeah.
So, I just don't know if they, if they were notified.
Ray Street address, but...
I think it's a Ray Street address.
Only talk to Bulldog.
And Bulldog wouldn't care, because, yeah.
My concern is there's nobody responsible, designated in the application. The application is not complete.
Well, that's, yeah, it's not complete on the backside. We designate nobody as responsible person.
Well, Amy Parent, who is the leader of the organization, she said same as above for...
She didn't indicate herself as the primary, as the responsible person, I think.
Name and address of the, name and address, telephone number of the person or persons who will be responsible for conducting the proposed use. Oh, but I thought that was blank, because there's no one that lives there. That's the petition we have to get for the residents. The application is the first page.
Yeah. But the petition for street use permit?
So this means we need to get both log and lanes and...
Well, I don't know if she would have to get the house, because the house has the Center Street address, so it will not hinder...
Is it Ray Street or Center? Ray, right?
The driveway, the driveways on Center Street.
Yeah, but the legal address is Ray Street.
Whatever. Will not hinder them, although it is going to be in their yard. So...
Or the street closed up to driving?
Well, there are driveways on Center Street. That's what I'm saying. I don't think that it really affects them, other than...
Notification.
Notification that it's happening.
When's this for?
June twenty ninth. Noon until eight or nine P.M.
Well, we still have time to go back to the areas before June. Yeah, this, this should, this should come back filled out.
I don't know that we do have time. It's May.
June twenty ninth, we're going to have another board meeting waived.
I understand that, but she's going to have to advertise, and if she doesn't have, it is written in stone, she really can't advertise, right?
That's not my problem. My problem is getting the form filled out right.
Right, not disagreeing with that. So I will make a motion to approve this with the contingency that she fill out the form, finish filling out the form, to list a responsible party.
Present with the next board meeting, please. With proof presented.
With proof presented, oh, yes, okay. I didn't hear the proof part, but yeah.
No, no, I didn't say it.
Yes.
So Pam's made a motion to approve pending presentation of proof that this completed in its entirety. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Now, is there further discussion?
I guess I just, I have a quick question. The, the petition for street use permit says that it, we wouldn't grant a permit for longer than six hours. So, I mean, I, I don't think it matters, but she's asking for eight or nine hours, which is something to point out.
Oh.
It does have mandatory denial in heat, so...
It causes mandatory denial?
It is a mandatory, under a policy, yeah. The application requests a period for use of the street in excess of six hours, and mandatory there. That's according to ordinance.
And we're kind of screwed, we can't help her. So I think then she needs to come back with the application corrected with a time period of six hours or less.
And move to the next board meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I'm sorry, I didn't read that part.
I just thought...
So...
I'll rescind my second.
I'll rescind my first.
So motion has been rescinded pending updated application form.
Yeah, so what, denied until, right?
Yeah, indicating correct number of hours, and actually that it's completed.
With the note that we do feel, or we understand, we are supportive of.
Yeah.
And it looks like the petition just needs to be filled out by Bulldog. But it requires the business owner's signatures as well.
Right, so she's got to get written approval from them.
From the land, and from Bulldog, right?
Yeah, but she also has to, she'll have to change her timeline, either start later or...
And sooner.
And sooner.
Agreed. And why, the other mandatory denial is the proposed use could equally be held at a public park or other location.
I think she wants it close to a bar.
Oh, okay.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, I would, you know what? If I were going to do something like this, I would do the exact same thing.
I agree.
So...
Well, and it's good for the business.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely. Okay. We good on that? You got that, Danny?
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much. Nine, discussion and action, thirteen eleven Madison Street, parcel one oh seven zero eight zero six dash two six four dash five six one two dash four, and consideration of raise order. I believe this would be your time for the week.
Yes, no property needs more, um, what we're looking, if there's some kind of discussions we can have, and I believe we just received a letter, and as like, you know, the letter was sent, and then within that last month, and then I think about the fifteenth improvement had to be made, and that's to me a little unrealistic. We're hoping that we can have a discussion with somebody and work on something to get a plan, uh, that we can do to make this, get the property fixed up. There's intention to do more with the property, but, uh, I bought the lands right now, and the folks to our coffee shop, and that, that property's going to be addressed, focus was changed, um, so I understand making it look better, but there's things we'd like to do with the building.
Is it structurally sound?
Don't know for sure. If somebody could look at it. I mean, it's not going to fall over.
And what is your timeline?
That's what has to be done with it, how much, you know, it's just...
I mean, I understand that you're...
But, like, we got the letter, we had like two weeks, we need somebody to get a con, to somebody to look at the building. I don't think that's why they're...
So...
It'd surprise me just doing it through a committee.
Right, I'm, that's, I, this, I've not heard of this yet.
This is, the first time I heard about this was yesterday when I got the packet.
So who did the raise order?
This came out from a complaint that we received, so a property maintenance letter was sent out, make it in line with the property maintenance code for...
And when was the property maintenance code sent?
That was sent in April, for a, it was at least thirty days.
Sent thirty days, and, okay.
I got the letter, I think, the following week or something, because it wasn't sent like on the night. When I had gotten it, I think the time was, I think when I came into your office, um...
That was the week following we sent it?
That was, yes. And so, um, I had asked you at the time to let us know what to be exactly done, what that letter really, it had the whole ordinance things on there, so what...
Okay.
Anyway, someone got back to us, and then... So at that point is when Tracy, our building inspector, got involved, and he had the conversation to drive through, see it. It was his professional opinion, it's not, not my job for that, um, his...
Right, he said, so he's the one that said it, said it's a re-raise.
So he was the one that contacted me to, um, um, put that just to the board for safety and...
I'm going to sound really dumb here, Danny. I am dumb. Is that protocol, or doesn't it have to go to committee? After Tracy makes his judgment call, doesn't it have to go to a committee?
I would say planning committee or zoning committee, something.
Planning or zoning?
Not so sure it would have to.
No, I don't think it would.
So it's a statute of how the procedures are issued.
Okay, so you, you, just no, you, do you just say no, that doesn't have to? Okay, that's fine, I, I agree with you, okay.
But seeing that this was a discussion tonight, why weren't we notified about your agenda?
I think part of the argument is, too, is, I don't, they claim they haven't been informed of this meeting. They know that their property...
We all haven't heard anything of it.
Until today. So it comes from, I'm going from what the building inspector has talked to me about. Um, so this isn't, I mean, the boards can, even outside of a board meeting, issue it, the building inspector can issue it alone, outside of the board. Um, we thought that bringing it to the board for discussion would be the appropriate route. Um, but other than that...
Well, it's fine, but if it's going to come to the board, you'd think the property owners should get...
So it doesn't have to be in order to...
I know, but that's not the way we should do business. I would like a little bit more detail from your building inspector.
To that, okay, I'm going to go with that, because I would like to hear from Tracy. I don't think that he has all the power.
Oh, he does. Yes, he does.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I would, but I don't think that, I personally will not go along with him saying, because I said so, without being able to tell me, the roof is shot, the, you know, it might fall down, the building, the bricks are shot, because I'm assuming that's what we're talking about, right? It's a brick building?
I mean, anybody can read the ordinances, and I did, but it doesn't say, I want a, I want a bullet sheet from the inspector telling me and them and everybody else why.
Is this the first notification you've ever received on the building?
Right, and we, and we think, you know, we need something written up, or...
Right.
There's nothing, you just, you just said it's condemned. Well, why? We need something...
They didn't say it's condemned, so they...
No, but...
But you've spelled it...
It's got to be brought up the code. It's got to be brought up the code, but you'll, where's the list?
And did you have a phone conversation with Tracy?
Right.
No, you've not talked to Tracy.
We haven't done anything, no.
We've not talked to anybody except you.
Tracy hasn't contacted us, so we haven't talked to anybody. All we got is the notice in the mail.
And when we met, I gave you his contact information, did you reach out to him? Not, you know, and you said that you would contact him, talk to him, and then I asked them if we just meet or something like that, so we would know. And you said you would contact him and go from there. We have not heard anything since the way we were down at your office, nor have we gotten anything in the mail.
Here's what I think we should do, is just, uh, let's give this thirty days to get Tracy to come up and come up with something that, so we ain't know what the hell we're doing here. I mean, it, this doesn't make any sense to me, that it's just way in there.
I agree.
So why don't we...
Well, we don't have to hurry on anything.
Why don't we just move it to the next board, table it to the next board meeting?
But we know in, in time, yeah. Right, in that time, Troy, you have thirty days to have it inspected or do whatever you want to do, right? Because Tracy's going to come and tell us whatever you think.
Yeah, we have an annual structure, structurally sound, and...
Structurally sound.
The improved value is four thousand dollars, and I think these statutes, statute states anything...
Anything above fifty percent.
Fifty percent, yeah, anything over fifty percent. So you can't even hardly put a window on that building for two thousand dollars, so that's where the, um, the raising team in place was, the fact of the buildings were this amount to get it up to what would be deemed safe, I would think, you, is going to be more than what the value of the building is, taking the value of the structure.
Is there anything in there about historical?
Do you guys have any proof that it's a historical building?
Uh, at that point, then, you have to, you have...
Registered names or what's seen, yeah, anything like that.
There's a huge thing with the Historical Society, I tried it with the shack, and it is a ton to, to, to jump through.
I don't know if there's, there's no one booked with it, but, uh, I don't know, but anyway.
So, I mean, that's the, at this point, I think that's the best we can do for you guys, is to give you thirty days. You do what you need to do, and we'll call Tracy up, but, you know, and then, so at the next board meeting...
It's going to be on the agenda for next June.
It's going to be on the next, and he's, right, will already have his bill of points, or will be presenting it at that night, yeah.
And then a plan in place would be good.
Yeah.
And a timeline.
Yes.
To go along with the statute and the...
Because that'd be a long way for an extension, too, right?
Yes, yep.
As a, as a plan.
Oh, okay.
And a timeline.
Is a plan with timeline.
Okay.
How long has the building been sitting without any traffic in that? I mean, I understand it's potentially been used for stores and have used, but, how many years? Yeah, about few years.
It's been more than a...
But it don't matter right now, so let's go with our plan, and let's, let's, uh...
Yeah, probably from there.
We'll get more information.
Yeah.
I'd like to know if Tracy could ask, answer this question, too, if the raise order is the beginning of the process, and then would then address it, or if this is the final step?
It's the beginning.
So, maybe that's why the notice wasn't sent, because...
So when I talked with him, he said a couple options, um, what they did in the Azul, that we can give a timeline, so like you did, um, to either pull a permit or...
A plan.
A plan.
Which is what we'll be looking for in thirty days, at our June meeting, which is on June fourth. Okay, which is a little, yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. And for that, number ten, discussion, action, Verbacher, Verberker, Community Housing Survey and Comprehensive Plan update, in your package, both the housing study and the comprehensive plan update.
Um, they presented timelines for, um, each study, of kind of the planning and what to expect throughout the year, um, which is an update for that, um, a central recommendation from last, at least, meeting, so that's that letter from Gateway to the Drift List, which is...
You did that already?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, so, um, that would be...
So this will be included in the comprehensive plan, the language that they needed.
And then, well, Peter and Tony is going to put a, a line item to change so that we show support, right? He was going to write something up so that we could then propose it to the township of...
The other township.
Yeah, to have the same thing, that we are in, we are in support of that, in our, in our comprehensive plan.
Would we decide...
Matt from Verbacher's on the line, that's kind of my update for that. I don't know if you have anything else from that.
Thanks, Danny. Evening, everyone. I just wanted to say that, uh, the two contracts before you in the meeting packets tonight outline the approach that we, as a team collaborating with the village, would pursue for the housing study, as well as that comprehensive plan, uh, starting, if you so move and approve tonight, basically tomorrow, we'd be up and running, starting work on it, and that effort would take us through, uh, basically the first, second week of November, right around that election timeframe, in terms of the approval, uh, the, uh, final documents for both of those, uh, uh, products being delivered.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
So we've already additional approval that's needed. Any questions? For Matt, or for the housing study or the comprehensive plan? We have a timeline. Hearing none, we will move on to Agenda item eleven, discussion and action of the Geo Note spending.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Danny. I'll email you tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Um, the change from last month was the retention town maintenance, uh, was moved up before the approval from last time, from the proposed.
Okay.
There were any other cases, so.
That's the.
Nothing else than that is.
Okay, so are we running out of time on that, uh, the last eighty-five thousand, right? You said July first, July or thirty-first?
July thirty-first.
To designate.
So it'll be, your committee meeting's coming up.
It's gonna be.
This month should be a priority.
Critical.
Something in June, um, board meetings, June or July can approve the final designation.
And I think with that, it needs to clarify, so we can just do, instead of doing designate projects, you can do just like all capital projects, correct, with designated funds?
It would have to be like, um, you know, some building upgrades, or, or public utility upgrades specifically for that, but it doesn't have to be the windows for the building, could it just be the?
Kind of leave it more broad, a lot of the flexibility.
Okay, so that's gonna be a priority for the, the committee meetings going into June. We have to designate by July thirty-first, right? Okay. And how much do we have left in ARPA? Is that gone? Cause it says no later than twelve thirty-one twenty-four to designate ARPA, but it doesn't store that amount on that.
We still have ARPA. Lot of ARPA.
We have a lot of ARPA on the last, or is a lot designated?
Well, it's designated, but we have to do something with it by then, right? Or just designate it?
Yeah, it's been designated, so we have to see.
We have to actually use it.
Project, yeah.
But it, we're done with that, right? It's been designated out.
So half Public Works, half.
But it's, it's been designated to committee, but it hasn't been designated to something specific.
So now it needs to be drilled down, which would be committee work as well. Yeah. Everybody good? All right, number twelve, invoices to be paid. I don't know that I have it in me. We bought it from Quill for nine dollars and thirty things. Cold smell. Okay. I personally like how we have our description of maintenance for the big orange plow. I love that technical terminology. And you know, when you say that, everything wanders. It works, though. So the crack, crack filling for fifty thousand, is that done already?
Yep. It was approved, and it was done with the next.
It was done, really?
Next month, yeah. That's already done, Chipsy will be, uh, July project.
Must got right on their calendar, cause they.
They were waiting.
They were waiting for it?
They wanted to get us and get out of town, so they could move on to state.
Nice, okay. Is everybody's ready, I would entertain a motion. I'll make that motion to approve. And to that. By Pam, second by Zorro.
Zorro.
Zorro. Zorro. You have Zorro. By Sarah. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to number twelve, the approval of the Octagon Towers Purchase Agreement and Easement Agreement. So we have this wrapped up.
The final, final approval.
Final, final approval. We've got the easement and ground lease purchase agreement, as well as schedules, um, and Chris Nelson, I've been working with Exley, and they have done a, their due diligence. We've done a thorough review. My last communication was to Christopher was that I was gonna present it to the board, and that, do you feel confident that we, or you, have done our due diligence on the agreement of both documents? You feel comfortable to proceed as written? Is that a fair statement? He said, Carrie, that's a fair statement, the documents are ready to approve, and the language as negotiated is stronger than when we started, so the village is in good shape here. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the final, final approval of the easement and ground lease purchase agreement with Octagon.
So.
Carrie, can you catch me up on this?
Yeah, this is the, um, it's the Cellphone Towers. So the previous agreement was they would pay us, we had a lease agreement with them for like forty, no.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, for thirty-five thou.
Two something?
Thirty-five thousand a year, yeah.
Thirty-two, two thousand, going up by three percent each year.
Thirty-two something, yeah.
So, this is kind of a buyout of that, instead of, they're just purchasing it lock, stock, and.
Gotcha.
For forty years.
For forty years, yeah.
Decide just to, to be able to use it.
And then after forty years, it.
They either pay to take it down, or they extend it.
Ah.
If they're, if they're still using the towers at that point.
One-time payment for forty years.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And if they vacate before, they have to return the property to its free state.
It's gotta come down.
Gotta come down, and that's their cost, I mean, their cost, yeah, yeah. So this is kind of.
If you add it up, obviously, if you, if they stayed there for forty more years, you'd make a lot more that way.
Sure.
But if you took the payout, you invested it for forty years, you'd probably do better than what they would give you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other thing is, you don't know in ten years if technology changes, and they're even gonna want it.
True.
So.
So it was an option, or opportunity to take advantage of a good deal for them.
And for them to invest more in it, they wanted a longer commitment.
Sure.
And this has been a negotiation going on for two years, so it's finally come. Finally come when the board wanted, wanted it to be, so we could actually just be done, yeah.
Does the village still have an access point if we so do?
Correct. So with that, and with the blessing of the attorney, with the agreement, the attorney, that it's, they're ready to approve, and the language is negotiated stronger than what we had started, the starting point. And that the village is in good shape, I'd entertain a final motion to approve, so I can put my signature on this document.
If it's Sarah.
Oh, good. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Pam say aye.
All right, that brings us to committee reports. Black Earth Fire District. We have not had a meeting since, um, our last board meeting, but we do meet again this Thursday, May ninth. So that's the report for them. Clerk and Treasurer Field.
Um, supposed to happen in there, for, we're working a lot on fire projects, or the asbestos abatement, um.
Air quality permit that we had filed to tear building zone.
Air quality permit.
Nope. A lot of red tape came into play for the group property. As asbestos, that wasn't done, um, which we knew, but, um, extra permits that needed to be filed for, they call the air quality management stuff, so, um, a little bit of expense, but just a daunting process to get through with the DNR.
But the asbestos was minor.
Yeah, it's essentially was the minor, minor portion of the whole thing, but, um, that's tied up a lot of time, I guess, for the. These guys have been hammered with trying to do disconnect payments and that. We were out, um, actually with Vanguard, um, ready to do stuff, and that issue, uh, was resolved for the time being, so no dis- disconnects were done, um.
April started the, or was the end of the, um, fall, winter moratorium, from November to April, we can't disconnect any water during that time. Um, starting that up was over, so we don't have to, so we've been working of negotiating payment plans, um, arranging payments, contacting people, so that was turned out to, um, a list of about twenty. On the disconnect, we hung, um, uh, door hangers for disconnect warnings. That was worked down into for payment agreements and other plans for free payment for PFC rules, and it, we didn't have to turn anyone off, so that was good. This was. This was. Yeah. Um, so yeah, starting back up again with other accounts, for the kind of enrollment door for that. And fifty times in the office with property, Black Earth Creek Park, and utilities. And then, dating out from our last board meeting, um, she's now on maternity leave, so she'll be returning in July-ish. With a baby. On the Geo note, just kind of what we talked about before, of committee assignments for, um, uh, for May and June to be top of mind for Geo borrowing and projects of designating the money for projects to get this done. Um, starting with, um, still working on the, um, PFC stuff for the billing audit, um, our regular audit, and also going into working the others for our rate case that's going on this summer. But it's a lot of work.
What's your regular audit going?
I'm on the.
Is that you?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
That's you, right?
Yep, Dane Iowa. I attended first Dane Iowa meeting on April eighteenth. We approved the financial, um, there were no violations. They were visited by both DNR and Town and Country, uh, with no issues reported. They said it's always good. They're doing some tours. They did two group tours of just, um, interested individuals, that were in groups, and then also a UW-Plattville Engineering Tour. And these are, these tours are being arranged through one of the engineers down at Dane Iowa. So, it had some interested people touring, which is, he said it's been really good. Um, next meeting is May sixteenth. Economic Development. Pam, Pam, we'll come back to her. Scott, you attended that meeting, or you weren't?
Scott or Dana or higher.
Yeah.
Just abandoned this bunch of, uh, last night, there was just a presentation for ground swell stuff, um, where properties lie within the Black Earth Creek area. Um, there wasn't any designated, like, here's where the trail is going, intentions of where the trail's maybe gonna go, but obviously, there's still some gaps that need to be filled at this time.
Yeah, and talking about the strategic plan in the letter, um, from the Gateway to the surrounding communities of rural, on a trail. Um, Gateway wasn't, they don't want to just draw a line on that and just say.
Just gonna mention that, yeah. It's good that you brought that up, Danny. The, nobody wants to put down a line and say, here's where the trail, proposed trail is, because there's a lot of negotiations, farmers yet to happen, and a good move. You don't wanna say, here we're doing.
What I took away from it, too, was, um, ground swell is kind of like a manager, so they'll do the middleman stuff of working with the landowners and everything, but then, what they ask for from the villages and the townships, and even the school district, is public indication that we are in favor of this, um, cause that really helps them as an organization focus their efforts, and they can see, oh, we've got a whole bunch of municipal boards here saying, we're all interested in the same thing, so we're gonna focus on it. Um, so I know that we're planning on, uh, strategic plan thing as well, but, um, I think I talked to Peter right after the meeting, I said, if there was something that, you know, we could get the school board to sign on to, as well as the townships and the villages here, um, that would just be a really big indication.
Really opens it up for ground swell, I understand.
And just let them do the work then, but know that they've got the support.
Helps them with grants.
Yeah, I think it is a key, a key component of grants, because, yeah. You just gave your economic development committee report.
Thank you.
You're good? All right, anything else for that? We'll move on to emergency management.
No, no meeting.
No meeting. EMS committee?
It's not, it's next, it's this coming month, or next week.
This week, Thursday.
Thursday.
Um, Gateway, Tyler, Tyler, are you on? Yes. Hey, Derek Tyler?
Yes.
Any update for Gateway?
Uh, Gateway to the Drift List, that, and the main summary report is that, um, there is additional funds found that can help with construction of the bridge that will start potentially this year, if they're awarded, and if that's the case, the bridge, uh, connecting Sock in Dane County, uh, would be completed by end of twenty twenty-six. That would move up the timeline about a year, based on the TAP grant that's currently awarded for that work, and if that other funding is awarded, uh, then the TAP grant money would be returned. Also, in attendance was a potential candidate, um, for Dane County Executive. Her name was Melissa Aguard, and she is generally heavily in favor in wanting to work to get the trail connected between, uh, Sock City, Mesa Maney, Black Earth, and Cross Plains. And, I forget when the next meeting is, I apologize.
Oh, was it the one, was it the position, or was it the fellow with her?
He was, he was running for state senate, he's running on a poll that right, as of right now.
I see.
Is that everything, Tyler? You're good? Good. All right. Library Board.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I won't let you.
Couldn't say villain, right?
Yeah, I know, right? But you're gonna cover everything better than I.
Okay. Um, so we last met on April sixteenth. Um, we heard the results of the board survey from the SCLS consultant, um, and we had a discussion of those results, and then we finalized the public survey for the strategic plan, which is open right now. You should have all got heading your email for the strategic study. Um, we approved the social media policy and reviewed procedures for an upcoming team project in Cedaron County. So, um, it's something that our team volunteers were very passionate about, so, um, we wanted to have some plans and procedures in place, so that went as soon as possible. We had fifty-eight people came, that came to the Taylor Swift party on the nineteenth. Um, so it was, it was a lot of people, yeah. It, we had it really bumping in here. Um.
And a lot of, of age range, from like two to.
I would have, were you?
Why'd you say, were you here, Mitch?
I was not here, I didn't know about it.
He didn't have a graceful, he couldn't.
And then, our summer library program starts on June first. The theme for this year is Adventure Awakes at Your Library, so we'll be doing a lot of, like, adventure and outdoor theme, uh, programming. We are also partnering with American Players Theater to offer a limited number of free ticket vouchers, um, and that will be starting on May sixteenth. Um, they'll be available for checkout, so, um, we imagine that they'll go fast. So we haven't been advertising it yet so much. Um, our strategic plan, as I said, is underway, we've got the public survey out now. That is open until May thirty-first. Um, and then I spent a lot of last week in Stevens Point at the Conference Association for Public Libraries Conference, where I presented and introduced one of the keynote speakers. So very, very busy time for me, um, and I am glad to be back. Um, and our next meeting is May twenty-first.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, President's Report. Um, well, I attended and spoke at my very, kind of my first function. Um, April twenty-seventh, Gary Harrop and I both spoke at the New Heights, the Grove Grand Opening. That went well, it was well attended.
It was very, it was a nice piece, I thought, on video.
Oh, wow, yeah, that was, that was okay.
It was very, it was nice, you did good job.
Um, I did the library consultant interview with the Sweeney Group, so we got that done. And then I've been working on the Octagon closing, and then working on committee assignments. Fifteen months, which is kind of productive, so, somewhat. More to come, okay. Public Works Director Report, or Public Works Committee, you wanna do it as a joint kind of thing here?
I'll, I will have something to say afterwards.
Okay.
Uh, we have some new meter installs with some new housing. Uh, one of the houses that was put in has had some issues on their lot, as far as water, stuff like that. So there was kind of some involvement from myself, um, on that.
Was that a new house?
Yeah, up on Snyder Street, North and Port area.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, snow pile equipment's all washed up, put away for the season. Uh, Kurt invited Danny and myself, along with Brian Hood, uh, there was a long discussion about the solar metering going on out at Wisconsin Heights, um, so just as far as the meter reading, um, billing and such like that going on, so it was a good conversation to get us up to speed on how things are gonna work with that, as far as the billing and the metering, reading portion of it. Um, last month, case with fiber drops, um, communications going to houses, well won, as you guys probably seen, all the piping laying in the park. Um, that's pulled apart right now, uh, took the mortar, the electric mortar in to get looked at, um, just as a maintenance type thing. That company took the pump with them to have that examined. Um, a lot of the components in that wellhouse were fairly new from twenty sixteen, so there's, shouldn't be too many issues. The biggest thing is tomorrow, we'll televise it and just see what the entire well casing and everything looks like. Our floor had been down for a while for some repairs, got that picked up today. Um, thank you last year, Public Works approved spending to get, um, backup more type thing on another piece of equipment. Um, heater reads, uh, quite a few final reads, um, it's been swept, wells, extension wells are all done, so. Moving right along, busy.
Hold on, okay. I would like to call a meeting on the Public Works Committee for May twentieth at six P.M.
Do that, orientation for my daughter for real school.
Really? Really? Then. All right, well, I'll send some tomorrow. But what I'd like to say is that if anybody has anything, uh, since a lot of the Jeep, Jeep Go Note and the Arbor Funds, if anybody's got anything that they want to talk about with Public Works, if you're a man. If no, as expenditures.
All right, that completes Public Works. On to Parks.
Um, no meeting, I guess, update that I would have is just with groundswell. We already talked about that. One of the smaller houses did come down just because it was deemed as a hazard unsafe type thing. Um, did receive a text message, um, about twenty minutes ago, just so you guys are aware. Um, Officer Watkins showed up at the high school bas- baseball game, tapped the game, and everybody had to move their car off of the lot. So, there might be a ruckus in the community, just so you guys are aware, from the information I can.
Over here?
Yeah.
So, they were in the, the lot where they always parked, not the brand new lot.
Sure.
I just have, uh, Officer Watkins came down, the ball game, they just tapped the game, and everybody moved their car, helped out the lot. So, I'm assuming.
The back lot.
So, we're just.
It is in property.
So, you're aware. Um, other first thing, I guess, you know, we haven't had a meeting, um, just stuff going on, so. Um, parks are looking nice. Uh, we had action done. Uh, Wilson Two has been doing the fertilizing, we're going to do weed control here fairly soon, so.
Parks are looking really neat.
Yeah, Lori, um, Scott's was on Parks Committee, so she's been working with Wilson Two as far as getting some trees, um, for veterans park.
Did they do the, um, asbestos abatement survey at Cooper?
Yeah.
And so now, are you from where?
From.
The village. So, the house is going to come down.
Uh, we still have some timeline and we have to be fourteen.
Be fourteen, so.
Fourteen is my beginning, yeah, yeah.
To bring the house down?
Yes. Uh, we'll be working with Vanguard, um, some tree removal too. We'll see, yep. I'd have to coax them.
I'm assuming when you do that, Matt, you're going to be there to take care of my dog, right?
Not your dog. I'll be a worker, complain with your dog.
My dog was supposed to be your friend. And when you say, do you think the house, is that going to be just raised, I mean, bulldozed or is it going to be a, they're going to burn it or they?
Uh, we were told we can't burn it.
Oh, okay.
There was a neighbor that didn't want it. It'll be just crushed and probably.
Okay, crushed. He didn't want to. Have you met my husband? Oh, no, he didn't. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
That's great. Um, please committee.
Well, we have not yet.
Okay. Mr. Meyer, Electrical Superintendent Report. Welcome.
Um, he hired a new apprentice. Um, his name is Deja Hill. He's originally from Haru. Been working the last year or so down in Rockfall, Illinois, so it was good to get somebody with a little bit of experience, not training from day one. Um, he, we are working on getting him signed up for the rest of his furniture class. We are, um, sending him to Northwest Tech College up in Green Bay. A little bit of time before that needs to be done, the classes don't start till August. Um, they're still working with ATC on getting the transformer heated up. And I talked to them the other day and they, they need to take an outage on basically the whole town to heat it up. And.
How long?
Don't know, that hasn't happened right now.
Can you do it in the middle of the night?
We would plan it at probably three o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
But, as, but, I don't know, it's that factory that we talked about. We think we can get that up and going by, and if needed, we think if we would do it at three o'clock in the morning.
A transfer somewhere.
We can hopefully get almost all the work on. So, we can, we maybe have to send out notifications or something to kind of, like, don't use anything, you know? But, so, I'm going to work with the line, trying to see what they can handle. You know, they know what we can handle for them. I'm trying to figure out if they can handle it with us. And, so, yeah. So, like I said, we would do it at like an off-peak hour, three o'clock in the morning.
And I think that when we do the date, that's going to mean more than just a little verb in the newsletter. That's going to be.
That's going to be like a, someone, everyone a letter, put it on Facebook, put it everywhere.
Yeah, and website, I mean, it's going to be a multi.
Because then, yeah, because they had contacted me wondering what we can handle for, or, you know, basically you're sending out that sub. I'm like, we, we don't have another one, so, because the whole point of this.
Yeah.
Um, I'm like, I prefer zero outage.
Okay.
But I, so I, they have not gotten back to me in what they need.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah.
Is there a when? Like, month?
It would be probably fall-ish.
Oh.
At the earliest, I would say. Um, but as, other than that, most of our work has been being done in Mayville. Um, the last month has been fairly quiet, Black Earth, kind of maintenance items. All our construction has been Mayville. Um, I guess I, President, or I took over this, I was told to stay out of Black Earth, basically. Um, that do, Sean said basically do maintenance only. We there, no money to spend. I would like to know what kind of money we do have to spend. Obviously, we need to, you know, the more construction we do, the more we can put back into our rates, so I'd like to kind of have a budget, but.
What do you want to do?
I guess.
That's kind of the limit, but you don't have the money right now.
No, I was going to say, I just.
The substation's kind of gobbled.
The substation took everything.
I understand, I was going to say, I just, kind of know what kind of flex spending I have, because then there's always projects that need to be done.
The substation didn't take crap. Geo and all paid for.
Right.
The substation. What, what is, are, we're so tight on budget right now that there's not extra money for projects. We're just paying them either. So, we need to, we need to reevaluate our utility, like I've been asking for with Danic or whoever.
I thought we were in that, right?
So, we know the condition we're in and what we have to spend, because we can't answer that. So, we need to get that out.
Well, yeah.
And that would be this board's responsibility.
Texas Board's responsibility to get that done.
Didn't we do that? Didn't we?
Talked about it. Nothing's been done. Not, not for over a year, year and a half.
I thought there were the most.
We talked about it. I don't know if it was.
Okay, I'm.
I don't, I don't know if we actually approved.
Not going to say, you know, I'm excited, I know we discussed that.
We did.
See, Eric Astorian is gone now. Good. Get some big shoes to fill, yeah.
This will be in my first binder.
So, more to follow on that. Okay. All right. Thank you. Vanguard Commission.
Okay, wait a minute. Is that, is that something we need to put on the next board then?
We need to get it on there to get it approved, yeah.
Okay, I got it on.
And what is that, Mitch? I'm sorry.
Uh, gentleman had done a review for us before, um, just so we kind of had an independent person from the outside saying, where are we? How much do we have? And, and, uh, we were cash poor at the time, didn't know it, right? Um, and things have changed because we had a rate case and think, well, we don't, we need to know where we're at, so we need to do it again. And it's very small money compared to what you get out of it.
Sure.
I mean, I think we spent fifteen hundred dollars.
And from that, we can see, good question on what we have to say here and what he can plan to do.
Okay, my question would be is, who, who's going to contact? And should we take some action on this now? I mean.
Can we?
Well, I think we should contact him and get him all set up and just approve the money at the next board meeting.
Well, it was already approved with the electric rate case with ours.
Hey, oh, Jeff was? So, it's already approved? We just got to contact?
So, we just got to set it up, we can contact them. Oh, there, see it?
All right. You want to contact him?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Cause you got his info, don't you? I can forward it to you.
Yeah, that would be good.
Well, why don't you just contact her?
Huh? Well, I could if she wants me to, but if she, it'd be good, I mean, it's up to her, whatever she wants.
I can contact her.
I'll get you the info.
And it's Danic, right?
Yep, Jeff.
Just call, yeah. It didn't work. That's good, that's good. It's good for me. Okay, now, can we move on to Vanguard? Ooh, it's Darman though. Look at that.
Um, Vanguard did not meet. It'll be meeting in July.
Over to the basement.
I don't know.
Is their meeting in July, in July?
I think it's in July. I haven't gotten anything from, um, from Peter. If you know the date, I don't have one on my calendar, so.
No, I didn't. I thought I had. No.
Okay. Maybe I'll give Peter a call tomorrow and see.
Okay.
All right.
All right. That completes the committee report. Now, I would entertain a motion of a number fifteen. I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified of public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Second. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. Cut our session.
We take.
No action to be taken. We are going to break for five, and then we will move to go back into closed session.
Was it twenty? Uh, it, it had, it had the, the thing.
My motorcycle, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's the low, there were like the low wispy clouds, and I was, I was driving, it's like, those look weird. And then as I'm going like under them, they started doing that, and I was like, eh.
They're funneling.
That's, that's a funnel. That's a rotation.